Good evening. I'm going to call the our April 11th, 2024 meeting of the planning commission's order. I am Lisa Ellsworth, the Chair of the Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lessin.
Here.
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
And I have an excused absence from Vice Chair Hernandez Mahay.
Right. I see we've got the minutes before us. Have everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 14th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There any business from the audience? No one is in the chambers. Is anyone online?
No.
I don't see anyone. Okay, let's move on to communications.
I don't have any.
Okay. So tonight, we have a work session, which is regarding the legislative amendment LA 24-02 related to food cart and food cart pods. Do we have presentation? It looks like we do.
Dan Handel is going to present it for you. He's been working really hard on this. He'll walk you through the details of what he's got so far. He's working very closely with our city attorney.
Okay.
As well. And I apologize, I have a bit of a cold this evening. That's why I'm over here.
Yeah, I thought it would be a little easier to go through in a PowerPoint rather than kind of going line by line through a whole lot of red text. But to just kind of run through where we are and where we're suggesting to go from here. We've put together a first attempt, a first draft at some code language for food cart pods. Based on what staff heard from you at our last meeting. So here, we'll just kind of go through it. If it's in line with what you were thinking, that's great. If you have some feedback, some comments, changes, additions, you know, happy to incorporate those. We are suggesting one more work session at the second April meeting, so in two weeks. Between now and then, I can incorporate any discussion from tonight. I also have a short list of folks that I want to reach out to, share this with them, get their feedback. So recent inquiries that we have over the past couple of years from food truck operators, get the Chamber of Commerce, downtown businesses. We met with a food cart developer last meeting, so love to share this with them. And if we do another work session, that would give us some time to solicit feedback from them. If anyone wanted to show up at the next one, they could. That way, you're not taking comments during a public hearing and being pressured to make changes. So that was the thought behind that. Up to you totally on how you want to proceed. But from there, we could go on to a public hearing, assuming things look good, May 23rd. And it would go to city council then, end of June. Tentative schedule. If it doesn't work that way, that's fine. Just what staff is suggesting at the moment. So from what we discussed last meeting, what we heard was for how to regulate food carts, we're really the commission really wanted to make a distinction between permanent and temporary is what I heard. The more permanent locations would be limited to within a food cart pod, so none of the kind of the one offs with their own little structures. We wanted to move away from that is what I heard, but still have options for temporary. So carts that might go to a business over the lunch hour, or if there's a special event like Taste of Woodburn or Cinco de Mayo, things like that, there'd still be opportunities for folks to bring food trucks in. But it would be a much shorter timeframe. Currently, we allow up to 60 days under a temporary permit. And what I heard was we wanted to limit those temporary locations to three days as part of a special event, or if you're going to be mobile, you'd be, you know, traveling and you would be time limited per day. So I'll go into a little bit more of that here. But that was just kind of the biggest theme I took away. So in terms of mobile food services, what we're proposing is a food cart, food cart that would not stay in one location for longer than two hours in a 24-hour period. The two-hour number I want to bring to you for discussion, that was something that I pulled from Oregon Health Authority. They, when they do their review, and this would be Marion County doing a review of the OHA rules when they, when the operator gets their permit from the health department. The health authority rules require a restroom, an accessible restroom, if you are in a location longer than two hours. So that's where that number comes from. But if you wanted to give someone more time in one location, it would just be up to them to figure out their restrooms as part of their Marion County permit. I have read that operators, you know, they, they get set up somewhere for like a lunch hour. And it, you know, it takes them 30 minutes to get set up and 30 minutes to kind of clean up and get ready to move. It might, it might be shorter than 30, it might be longer. I'm just using that as an example. So that is one thing I have read about to suggest maybe a longer time period, but.
That seems reasonable to me. Two hours seems very short if that's.
Well, let me ask a question. You've got it worded, that cart does not stay in one location. About that cart does not serve in one location because caterers, you're right, caterers do take maybe 30 minutes on either end to set up depending on what it is. And you're saying that the vehicle can't be there. If the OHA ruling is for restrooms, you're not going to need a restroom until they actually start serving food.
Well, people.
Oh, okay.
They place an order and it takes time for it to be filled. And then, you know, two hours is, doesn't seem reasonable.
Unreasonable.
It's, I. It seems very short. It seems like a very short period of time for you to make any money.
I know.
But we're, but we're trying to say this is during like a lunch hour, right? They pull up to our house and they, so, I mean.
Yeah.
This would be very specific to the, the trucks that would drive around to like serve an industrial employer. Chris, didn't you say there's one in Amazon that comes in during the lunch hour?
Yeah, we have one now that comes into Amazon. They occasionally come into sites and drive around. I mean, I think adding a little time to it doesn't really, I don't think it would impact it. What the the issue is, we don't want it there for a long time and it becomes saying the permanent thing. It seems to me that making that, you know, serving it for three or four hours is fun. Can I make the most minor recommendation if you don't mind? And I'm just throwing it out. Maybe we can write this in a I don't, I don't like the, it feels very negative to say it does not stay. Can we just say a food cart that serves at one location, if that was the chair's recommendation, for less than, say, four hours? If that makes sense? Right now, it reads kind of a, it does not stay somewhere for longer than, it just seems kind of backwards.
Yeah.
Makes it clear, I think. Thanks.
And that does help a place like Amazon that may have rotating schedules. So this group's break is from 11 to 12. This break is from 11:30 to 12:30. Yeah, and very often with a large industrial, they, they do that. And it.
Yeah, and you don't know, they're going to have a couple of shifts out there and they may want to come back.
Because I remember they used to come out and do the breakfast run. The trucks would pull up for breakfast for about 30 minutes. They would leave, come back at lunch. And then they, so, but it was a very short because everybody has the same 30-minute, you know, break. So I, yeah, but I think that's four hours is probably, yeah.
That would allow them to serve both the breakfast and the lunch.
And Amazon will need some time. They should have a lot of employees coming out.
Yeah.
They have rolling breaks, but.
Usually those places have restaurants.
Right. Yep. Okay. Wonderful feedback. Thank you. I wanted to call out briefly, this is already in our code. Talks about delivery services. So getting more at ice cream trucks, your Grubhub, Uber Eats, you know, the food delivery services. We already have standards regulating these. And they need to be moving in 15-minute increments or less.
That was actually one of my questions. How does this impact ice cream trucks? The people on bicycles that are selling porn or Tommies or.
Where are they?
They're not, they're not considered a food cart.
No, I want the location.
Right. They're, they're more of a delivery service. They would just do a, a business registration with our finance department. And they wouldn't even really need to go through our office.
I confused that was one of my notes.
Yeah. Okay, special events. The main change here being proposed is to really call out food carts and limit them to a single event or a recurring event. And what the, what those mean here. So a single event, this is already kind of current language, how these events are, are defined here. A single event is up to three days. So kind of your Thursday through, or Friday through Sunday event. A recurring event would be kind of like a farmer's market every Saturday for up to 36 weeks per year. And then seasonal sales, this is where the 60 days is kind of the loophole is right now for food trucks. So this would specifically state that food carts are not allowed as a seasonal sale. Is that in line with what you were hoping to see? For these types of temporary special events?
I don't think I understand it.
Yeah.
I don't know the difference between special seasonal sales and special events. Sorry.
So a seasonal sale is a type of special event. So like a, the firework tents, Christmas tree. You go buy a Christmas tree or something. These are sales of seasonal items, you know, whatever it is.
Is it possible to exclude fireworks and not have them legal here to sell?
I think that's.
This body couldn't do that. I imagine that the city council could make that decision if they wanted to. Yeah, just to if it helps kind of my, the, the reason this is like the really important part for at least me and on the regulatory side. Right now, think of these special events as capturing everything that comes in the door from, you know, Christmas tree stands, they want to sell them to cookies, to any other, like the Fiesta, right? Right? They all get these special event permits. That's your, it's this one permit. And if you look closely, it reads duration. Seasonal sale event should be limited to a maximum of 60 days. This is what, I mentioned this before, but this is really important. This is why food trucks have been sitting on corners sometimes for 60 days when I don't think that was the intent. And what this would do is this language would say that those would not qualify for that. So it cuts out that loophole. That's the simple thing that this does. It wouldn't change anything else about special events, would it then?
It's, yeah, they, or no, it wouldn't. They would still be allowed to be part of like a Taste of Woodburn or
Right.
A farmer's market or a Cinco de Mayo, you know, Fiesta, all those. It, as you said, it would just eliminate that loophole.
I feel really dense. I don't understand the difference between so, so seasonal sales. Somewhat, where did I see it? Limited for 24 hours a year. Oh, there it is there. Okay, so a seasonal sales maximum duration of 60 consecutive days per calendar year. What season lasts 60 days?
Exactly.
I don't understand it.
Christmas trees for sure. I mean, day after Thanksgiving.
Cheese, not 60 days. That's, oh, do they sell tacos at Christmas tree stands? I don't understand it.
Well, so sometimes you'll have a seasonal event, but then you'll have food trucks that will come to the seasonal event, right? And under the current code, you could, that food truck could stay there for 60 days. So the idea is to close that loophole such that you would still have a Christmas tree stand or you would still have a firework stand or whatever, the seasonal, even like a farm stand, for example. But then you would not be able to have a mobile food truck that uses that permit to stay in that same location for 60 days, which is what we have right now.
Say the duration, it's limited to six, I can stay there 60 days if I have a truck.
Well, that's why.
That's why.
Here in yellow, it says not as a seasonal.
Then why is it say seasonal sales event shall be limited to a maximum duration of 60? Is that?
Because this covers all the special events, including seasonal events, amusement.
I think there's something confusing about that language. It, it. Am I wrong? I don't know. I don't understand.
I agree with you. I agree with you because in yellow, it talks about not allowing it as a seasonal sales event. But then down below, it's like it added, adds it back again.
Right. So can't we, is there a difference between that number B3 seasonal sales event and the A4 seasonal sale event? Are those the same thing?
Maybe it would, I can, as part of what I come back with at our next meeting, work this section a little bit more to specify, I guess, three different types of special events.
Okay.
Based on their duration.
Yeah, I don't understand it at all.
Yeah, we can definitely take a further look at that.
Dan, can, can I ask why it used to say two events for 30 days each and we turned it to 60 full day? You recall that, Chris?
I just turned to that page. I don't know why it was originally written as two seasonal sale events with each event not exceeding more than 30 days.
So just to not, I know it's, it's a bit of a rabbit hole, but every, every little loophole, someone will find to get through. And it's like, oh, and all of a sudden something's up there for two months and you can't do much about it. Or they're on a lot next door. And now they've opened to the lot next door, which is eight feet from the old one. They're open for 120 days. So we'll, we want to tighten this up. The, I can tell you the rationale behind allowing two seasonal events for a maximum of 30 days gets to typically wherever you have a Christmas tree stand, you also have a firework stand in the summertime. So that's two different events and they cap how long they can be there. I kind of like that. I don't, I think that would be fine.
I think it's more, yes.
The reason the seasonal sale event is at 60 days was because we used to have a farmer's market downtown that lasted for the summer. Music in the park lasts for the summer.
So can't we specify?
Even though they're not consecutive, well, the the 60 days may have had to do with farm stands being open.
I don't know that we have any now. I, I can't think of any event that's more than, or any even temporary sales event that's more than 30 days.
We don't now, but we.
Okay.
We had some, through the summer, it wasn't consecutive days, but the the farmer's market did run for the entire summer.
But I think the two 30-day periods, that is more specific. Don't you think it's a better?
I do. I'm not, again, I'm still thinking of why we had pulled it. My biggest issue is that we don't open that up to having a food truck there for the entire duration of those events. Because then, just to, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but what happens is they open up, say, well, there's no real event. I'm just selling my stuff. We need to put a, that's what we're trying to stop.
To be duration B3 sounds like it permits it rather than is limiting.
Yeah, maximum.
But the other thing is on 2.07.17, the name used to be temporary outdoor marketing and special events. I think that old name was better, was more descriptive than deleting that first.
Okay.
It's a little, special events, I don't know. A little vague.
Yeah, we can definitely keep the old wording.
There is another place too that I had a suggestion. 2.07.08. Just delete the first sentence altogether. It sounds a little bit like an affirmation. It's, it's really not consistent with the rest of the.
Okay.
But that would be my suggestion, just because it's complete. This section is intended to establish development standards. So that says everything. The first sentence is just kind of marketing.
Yeah.
And even Yeah, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will spend some more time before we meet with you next, kind of cleaning up the special event section. Hopefully it'll be a little more easy to navigate for everybody.
Instructions, what is it that we're trying to accomplish with that one? It's it doesn't pertain to food carts, I don't think.
This will be out of the next version you, you see. What I was originally doing was just trying to reutilize or reuse the 20707 number in this chapter. Because that, that used to be our duplex regulations before we had to make our middle housing changes.
Okay.
So it was just blank.
So that's just a.
So my intent was just to shift it up and keep our alphabetical organization, but I think to avoid confusion, I, I just will not do that.
I think it's a good, if we're going to adjust, it's a good opportunity to do it, but you might have to answer that question again.
Right. Okay. So I wanted to shift here now into our actual standards for food cart pods. So the first section talks about applicability permitting and review. And this is where we explicitly state that food carts should be located within a food cart pod except those mobile food services that we're, we're not going to change to four hours, but kind of that breakfast, lunch shift concept. So in terms of the review that our department would do, we're proposing a, a type two design review. So that would be a staff decision. But it would also provide notice of the decision to property owners within 250 feet after we make a decision.
And it also goes to the city council for a notification if they wanted to call it up and hear it on appeal.
This is correct, yes.
That means there wouldn't be a hearing in front of the city council. It just means that we present it to them. If you see this sometimes at a council meeting, we say, by the way, this is something that happened at the kind of lower levels of the reviews. It's pretty rare that they call something up, but it's good to keep them informed and they would still have an opportunity to do so.
And then if there was an existing pod that wanted to expand in some way, it would be a simple type one, just kind of an administrative review or approval. Our goal here was to try to minimize the timeline for the review as much as was reasonable based on kind of the limited standards that were being applied. So there's also in here, you know, city, fire district, county, and state rules they'll need to follow, keep up with those permits. Register the businesses with the finance department here. So just, that's a lot of the, the standard permitting procedures.
How does this impact our existing kind of layout of what we have now? Are they going to have to be reapplying? Is it gonna, what's going to happen with what's already here?
That's a good question. We would I guess, stop issuing those temporary permits once the, the new changes were adopted and effective. And then I, I suppose there'd be maybe like a a notice given to, to those existing folks that have operated under those temporary permits to say, hey, the rules are changing. You're no longer going to be able to take advantage of that.
Everyone that's operating with an existing legal permit will keep using it until their time expires. They have an expiration date on them. And they wouldn't be able to do another one next year presumably. Usually that's what happens. To get.
Just thinking back, a lot of the stuff that we have, I mean, some of them are outside of our city, right? They fall in within Marion County, right? Is that still, so we, what I'm thinking is pitchforks out here with people upset about their food carts shutting down and we're going to have to answer, but do you guys foresee? I mean, do we have a lot of these that are going to get within the cities? I, I can think of two or three, but.
So, yeah, just, yeah, so to, for the ones that you see, the sort of one offs that kind of appear and come back. Those, again, assuming they're legal, they wouldn't be able to operate again.
Yeah.
Once their, their little time period expires. The existing one we have right now up in the industrial area, I guess that's progress that cuts, or industrial.
Yeah.
Way. That comes across. That one has been operating under the current code in the industrial zone. We have some pretty limited requirements in there. But they're, they have an application in now, which means they're technically vested under the current code. Wouldn't be subject to what we have here unless they came in and made changes. They essentially become non-conforming. So it's legal, it's perfectly legal. They can continue to operate as long as they continue to operate legally. And wouldn't have to change anything, just like any other non-conforming use. But a new one would have to meet the new requirements. We only have that one quote pod.
Yeah.
Everything else would be gone.
And this new outline might encourage them to actually build a true pod under these rules and expand.
So the two are going to be able to operate on different rules?
Well, that's true, but that's true of like anytime we modify the code, everybody who already has a business open, they get to keep operating under the old rules until they come in. Yes, they can. You're not, you don't lose a non-conformity over time. You can just keep operating as long as you keep doing it. What happens typically is they come in to do a modification, grow, expand, change their parking area, change the use, and then they're subject, then they're subject to our new codes.
There we go.
So the next section, I have a question. Where did you find these standards? What?
Let's see. A lot of them were just not really found anywhere. So this is a, what's on the slide here is, is a much simpler version of what was in the redline text. The five-foot setback is what we would require for most accessory structures, like a shed or a gazebo or something. So it seemed like it would be a a, a good standard to also apply here. Not having any carts or structures in our wetland. Not having, uh, any, uh, carts or structures in our, uh, wetland, um, riparian area. Uh, or in a public utilities meant. Or those, uh, vision clearance areas at intersections. Those more so just staying in conformance with the rest of, of the development code. A five foot separation between carts. I had heard from one. Food cart developer, pod developer that. Uh, they found that at least four feet. Was very helpful for maintaining access around each cart. I've rounded up to five, just as a, an even number. And I think. ADA code is five feet now for a, a walkway to be ADA compliant. I think it's five feet. Uh, the dimensions for, for carts, uh, I believe I pulled those out of a, um. A national study of, of food carts. Yeah, not, probably not quite as big as like one of those big RV campers that you can drive, um, but. They can definitely get up there in size if they've got onboard freezers and, you know, fryers and all sorts of stuff. They can definitely get up there. Uh, the paved surface was, I think what I heard at our last meeting, we want them on paved surfaces. The common seating area, uh. These are numbers I, oh, the fifty square feet per cart is something I kind of made up as thinking about a, a picnic table. You know, your average picnic table is eight feet long. And I think it's about six feet wide, so that's forty eight square feet. One picnic table per cart seemed reasonable. I don't have any. Grand. Research or anything to point to for that one, but, um, I was just going with what sounded reasonable. Uh, also being ADA compliant there. Being in Oregon, uh, at least some cover would be nice. So that's where the, the half coverage. Came from. If you wanted to put more, that you could put more or less. Let's see, uh, internal walkways for, uh, getting to all of the amenities. So connecting your carts to your seating areas, to restrooms. Uh, that would help with ADA compliance. And then the last two, uh, just complying with state requirements for restrooms and, and trash cans. And then, uh, the dumpster, like a central dumpster for trash collection, help keep things clean. I also have in there, uh, having a, a cover over that dumpster area. Right now, we don't require that in our code, uh, but I think. Engineering standards are going that direction because. Especially if you have, uh, restaurants, um, a lot of runoff from the garbage can contain grease. Uh, so a lot of what they're requiring for like multifamily and, and restaurants now. Is, uh, to put a sewer drain under your, your dumpster area. With a grease trap to collect all of that, so it doesn't go into the storm drain system. Any questions about, uh, these development standards?
I do appreciate you explaining how you came to those.
Oh, yeah.
They sound reasonable and I just kind of. Hear how we came up with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I had just done kind of an introductory kind of comment. Thinking about where these are in the rest of the regulations. So these would be the specific site regulations, which are pretty minimal. First of all, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. The way the code is drafted based on the comments we received is we would allow these to. Open up in any industrial or commercial district in the city. But not residential. So just keep them on, so they wouldn't be allowed in a residential area, but in any commercial or industrial area, you could open one of these up, provided you go through these requirements.
So what I don't understand with the. Uh, the restrooms, do they have to build a facility?
Or? I'm glad you asked that question. So the, uh, health authority rules allow a food cart pod. To utilize another business, their restrooms. If they've been given permission and it's within five hundred feet. Um, or you can build your own restroom building onsite.
Can I ask it, that's, Dan knows this far better than me. The porta potty prohibition, is that ours? We just don't like them? Or could you do that under the?
Both ours and not allowed, uh, within the health authority.
And I mentioned that because I'm just thinking kind of big picture costs what it is to, not that I'm trying to make it inexpensive, but. If I were gonna open one, the big cost components to this are, that's the first one, right? If I don't happen to be within five hundred feet, or it's not sized enough to deal with the people coming in, or that restaurant or business doesn't want, doesn't want to share their restroom, or I don't know, want to pay that. Cost that they're gonna charge me for it. Um, that's a, that would be pretty cost prohibitive. Not that's a bad thing. It is what it is, right? You have to provide restrooms if you're gonna provide services for the public. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm just pointing that out as a, that, that, that'll be a big part to this. And I think it's perfectly fair and legitimate that if you were opening one downtown. Be pretty easy to use an adjacent restaurant rather than have to go through the, you know, all the trouble of building something new for, you know, your three food cart pods that you're gonna open up.
Are we gonna have to get some kind of contract that, that business next door signed off on? Is that just the way that would?
That would be something we would look for in our review.
And what would be their incentive to do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're probably gonna pay for that, but you know, what sometimes happens, you see this a lot is. Particularly in our downtown is where I think of it. A lot of our downtown restaurants have food trucks that they, that they have on their own, right? That they send around town. So they may want to open it up right next door and just kind of utilize their restaurant because they're happy to do it. I always had my dream of the downtown food cart pod that's gonna exist. But you might not want to have them build a brand new restroom facility when there's fifty seven restrooms within five hundred feet. Maybe they can make use of those.
Or if you have a bar next door and the bar wants, doesn't want to serve food, but. They get customers that come in to use the restroom and maybe they get a drink.
Do we want to include that in there then?
What's that?
I said, are, that, to add in the possibility of their, um. Arranging for a restroom within five hundred feet. I mean, is that something that we want to include in? That section?
We can, uh, it comes from, uh. Uh, Oregon revised statutes and in Oregon health authority rules.
Yeah, but I read it as number eight.
Yeah, we just referenced the county state requirement. They may change them and make them more prohibitive in the future. That'd be our risk, that if they did, we'd be tied to them. Right now, the language proposed is for that. We just happen to know that it's five hundred feet, but let's face it, that rule came about two years ago. It can change again.
So you mean they may provide a restroom and that includes renting one from the neighbor?
That's correct.
It's an option, yeah.
Yeah, we think it's, we think it's pretty good because they're always gonna have to go through that process anyway. They wouldn't get it from us because they couldn't get it from the county. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what is five hundred feet?
Is it about a block or a block and a half?
Probably.
Bigger downtown.
Probably, uh, probably be two blocks downtown here. It'd be five hundred feet.
One of the residential blocks.
This way or that way?
I want, yeah, I bet, like the library bathrooms, those are public bathrooms. I bet those would be considered accessible. If it were downtown, or city, city hall restrooms. Okay. Uh, next section gets into street improvements and how much we want to require along any street frontage that. Uh, touches the, the property that, uh, is being considered for a food cart pod. Uh, right now, what's being proposed is basically identical to what we would require for a single family home. Uh, or, uh, new middle housing like a duplex. So we'd be getting any right of way that would be necessary to match our standard width for whatever the street is supposed to be. We get a, a standard utility easement. Usually those are like five feet, uh, along the street. Uh, that's where a lot of your PGE, um, Comcast utilities like that usually locate within those areas. Um, and then, uh, we'd be looking at a sidewalk and street trees, or there's fee and loo option is, uh, what we're suggesting. Open to, uh, your thoughts on that though.
Dan, do you have, you may not have these at your fingertips, but do you have rough numbers on like? For an average, I don't know if it's, this, if it's comparable to a, a single family home. Or an average single family home, for example, what all four of those would total out to be?
The first two involve hiring a, a surveyor, a land surveyor. So I, I don't know off the top of my head what their rates would be. Maybe a couple thousand dollars. And then for sidewalk, I want to say in terms of private sector construction. Maybe like ten to twelve dollars per square foot for sidewalk. So if you've got a six foot wide sidewalk going a hundred feet, that's six thousand dollars.
That's, that's, and that's a pretty good estimate. We get a lot of fee and lose. Uh, people pay money instead of building a sidewalk. Sometimes it's beneficial to everyone. Say a typical single family home might between, between five and seventy five hundred dollars, five thousand and seventy five hundred dollars for a sidewalk. And just to point out two things on here, that, again, this is the same thing we ask of a single family home, which is our bare minimum. Development requirement or improvement requirements we have for streets. This will only be if you don't, if it's not already there, right? That's if we need more right of way than already been dedicated. If there isn't already a utility easement, there usually is. If there is not a sidewalk out there today, and if there aren't any street trees, so. Oftentimes, these are already here. If you're in an area that's already developed, all these things are there. And again, just to point out, the dedication of right of way. Doesn't mean they're building any more pavement curbing or storm or any of that. It just means we're getting that piece of paper for the right of way that we need. They wouldn't have to change what's on the ground. And that's basically so that in the future we can get it and. It also helps so that they don't put any kind of structures or buildings or signs within that future right of way.
Is there any, uh? Uh, so I know some, just different food cart part pods. You know, they have open side buildings. They have, you know, some of them are completely enclosed, full on type, commercial type buildings. Some of them are just barns or, you know, the. Uh, metal, you know, shop type looking barns. I mean, is that something that is in our code that is gonna be? I guess implemented in here, or is, are we?
Right, yep. So, um, they would just need to be five feet away from property lines. Not within these areas here, public utilities meant are riparian areas. A lot of times that's how they would provide covered seating.
Like the ones that they built at Smith, the, the new Smith, those.
Yes.
That would, something that would work. Pod like this.
Yep.
And just keep in mind, we're talking about sort of the zoning code. Separate from this is if they have a restroom, then of course they're gonna need plumbing, they're gonna need plumbing permits to meet all the code requirements. Um, they're gonna get some kind of meter if they need it, if they need irrigation, they're gonna have to get that. These are. Separate additional expenses, but they just come with whatever they need to do. And of course, if any, if they're putting in any permanent structure, it needs a building permit and it's always gonna get a fire review as well. So even like these covered patio seating areas. We want to make sure they're not falling or the wind's not gonna knock them over. So they're gonna require to get a permit, which means has to be legal, has to be, usually those are. Off the shelf plans, they come in, they're already pre-engineered. They do it. We still do inspections, check footers, whatever kind of footing they need. If it needs foundation, we'll do all that as well.
We're not gonna specify what type of.
Yeah, no, and sometimes they might be temporary, right? Decide, I like this idea of sort of fifty percent has to be covered because sometimes you don't want it to. And again, that, that's another, that can get very expensive to start putting these in. And again, if you're starting out.
Maybe your covering is umbrellas in each.
Yeah, which I, I, I don't think that's a big problem. I think, you know, picnic tables with umbrellas is just fine for a food cart pod. It's not a permanent restaurant. It may not be open twelve months a year.
Our intent here was to keep it kind of vague so that it did allow a lot of.
Creativity.
Creativity and, and, you know. If one site wants to do something this way, that's fine. Another one can do it somewhat a different way. Yep. Any other questions, comments about, uh, street improvements? Do we think it's fair? Okay. Uh, utilities, good transition to utilities now. One thing that I've, uh, I've seen now from a few different food cart pods is. These connections very similar to an RV park. Where you've got water and electricity and sometimes natural gas, uh, off a, a little pedestal. Uh, and then right under. In the, the pavement that they, the carts would be parked on, right underneath it would be, uh, the sewer hookup. So what we're suggesting here would be individual utility connections for each cart. That would be water and sewer with the city. Power through, I think PGE is the main power provider here. The question I have for the commission tonight, uh, talks about propane tanks and natural gas. What I've suggested. Is to allow propane tanks, um, just for greater flexibility. But. Hoping to get your opinion on that. I think our building and fire staff would. Prefer natural gas over propane for fire life safety. It's just a, a cleaner connection point. It's not out in the open, like tanks are out the open. So. Uh, up to you on whether you would want to allow them or not. Uh, it would certainly be a greater expense to require natural gas. A greater expense upfront for the developer to put those lines in. And then, uh, the pod or the carts operators themselves would need to have their equipment. Specific for natural gas.
Can I just ask, I'm trying to recall, we had the gentleman from the. Garages at the West Lynn food cart. And we asked him this question, but I've actually forgotten, I'm afraid. I think he said he had these pre-hooked up. Set up and they came in. And didn't one of us ask him specifically about whether or not they use propane? And I think, and I think he said they all just had a different hookup. And if they have propane, did they say they couldn't use it and they had to use his gas? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, they had to convert. There's a, a conversion that you do with your natural gas plants, so they all had to convert over.
Thank you.
I just think if they're going through, I mean, that, that's a big piece is this part here, uh, where this is gonna be, you know, expensive already. And so I just, I. I don't see, uh, I get that, you know, allowing propane, I guess, is, is. But we're asking for a lot, uh, and I think if we're there already where they're digging up. Sewer lines and, you know, water and everything, I, I don't know, I, I kind of just feel like we should just. Make it go for the full on, you know, home run, I guess, because we're, it's, it's a lot of work that someone's gonna have to do. And I just feel like we're kind of. I don't know, I, I kind of would like it to just. Natural gas, you know.
I would, but my, my. Question in my head is. What if these carts? They're, they're still mobile. They still have to have their wheels on them. They're still movable. What if Bob's Burgers decides he wants to go to the Fiesta for the weekend? And needs to back out and he will probably be using propane tanks at Fiesta.
I think that's where it goes to what he said. There, it's a pretty simple conversion, I thought, between. Very simple conversion. Yeah, you can go back and forth, I think.
But sure, I think these are, I think it makes it, it's in, it's a higher up. But sure, I think these are, I think it makes it, it's in, it's a higher up frame cost to put this in, but. And I, this is sort of a question, but it's more of a kind of an information. I think you hit it on the document, right? It's, they're already into in these other utilities. I think once you adding natural gas, that's a small piece of that puzzle. It, it's in and it's done.
If the ditch is already dug.
It is here running the other utilities to it. They've already thought that through. Yeah.
And we would, uh, well, I know the fire marshal would do an inspection on new natural gas lines, and I believe uh our building inspectors would as well. Okay.
Yeah, that is one that, as you're talking with some of the food cart people, I would. I'd want to hear a little bit of their feedback on that. I like the natural gas. Don't get me wrong. I'd say safer and easier. But I'd like to hear their, their take on that particular issue. What do they use now? Propane?
They do. It's, it's just easy. It's a propane tank. They fill it. It's cheap. The bad thing you probably know about that is, I don't, I'll speak, I'll speak.
They're easier to blow up.
They're easier to blow up, definitely. I'll speak for the fire marshal. He can't stand the propane tank, as you can imagine. They, they go off all the time and. They're technically, when they come in and get hooked up, he's supposed to actually do a review of their connections for their individual propane tank. But that often doesn't happen uh because it happens quick and they move in and they just start cooking.
Since we don't currently have pods, all of them be on propane tanks, right? So I mean. That would be their preference. But this has seemed like our consensus maybe is toward natural gas and then check in to see what they, I don't.
Because this is more for the developer anyway, right? I mean, I, this is going to be their.
It is. They'll have to put that in upfront. And when someone comes in and says, well, I have a propane tank. He's like, well, here's your, again, I don't know. I'm assuming it's a couple hundred dollar. Converter attachment piece that does this. I don't know the answer to that, but that's the kind of thing Dan can follow up on.
Yeah.
It's on them, which is pretty minimal to move.
Yeah.
Well, I just bought a table at Costco and it has both propane and. Natural gas. And so I need to get a permit to run a natural gas line to my patio. So. I'll tell you how hard it is, but my father-in-law says it's pretty simple. He said it's very simple. So that's why I'm saying, see, he has three of them in his house, so.
Just a quick search. Looks like you get the conversion kits for around forty bucks.
Yeah, so it's very, yeah.
Economical.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our inclination is to go, must be natural gas.
Yeah, it just feels like it's going to make the big expense, just go or do it the right from the get-go and if they change it later, then.
Very good. Um, Commissioner Bartel, uh, haven't heard from you in a while. Any comments up to this?
No, I think I'm thinking the same things that I'm hearing from everyone else, so I don't have any different questions. I'm just kind of. Thinking about conversation as we're going along.
Very good. Uh, and then uh stormwater detention, that's just like what we would require for any new development. Especially with a lot of new paved surface area. Uh, this would be something that we would want to look at.
That's a, that's a non-negotiable item anyway under our permits that we have for our stormwater. Yeah, we have a stormwater permit that requires us to do this for, for these area.
Okay. Moving on to access. Uh, duh, 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 duh. So this would be uh kind of like any other development review we would do. Meet our, our current access requirements. That talks about how wide your driveway can be, how many driveways you can have. Uh, right, I think before we convened the meeting tonight, a couple of us were in the room here talking about. The difference between should and shall in our, our code language. I'm recommending a should here. Uh, a couple of shoulds. Uh, access should be limited to a single driveway. To allow for, you know, if. There's a, a unique site that has multiple frontages where it makes uh sense to. Allow vehicles to flow through. They could have a second driveway. But this also gives us as staff, when we're reviewing it, uh, a little bit of. Like to stand on when we say we'd prefer to limit something to one driveway. And then uh access for corner lots. So if you have a property on the corner of ninety-nine and. One of the side streets, oh, this would be uh our um ability to. Limit that access to go from the side street rather than going right onto the highway. Uh, okay, so that, that's focused more on the vehicular access uh side of things. Uh, number two talks about. Uh, if you're a pedestrian, getting access into uh the site. So this is stating we would require a, a six-foot walkway connection between the sidewalk. And that uh internal walkway. If you're on a corner, that could just be one single access point at the corner, a little bit wider. And then uh not allowing any drive-throughs.
And I had a, just, I just for discussion, if you don't mind. I don't, if everybody loves it, it's certainly fine. I don't have objections about it. This six-foot are the sidewalk requirement we had in. All right. So it's the same, essentially the same six-foot wide sidewalk that would run onto the site for access, which is always a good idea. Prohibiting drive-throughs. I always think of the coffee shops. I don't know what other drive-through. Food trucks are, are, those are the only ones I ever can think of, but they're very common, very popular. This would prohibit that from existing in a quote pod. Which I, I don't know is a bad idea. It's fine with me, just commenting.
I typically think of a food cart pod as being more of a gathering area for people to mingle, sit down, enjoy a meal. Uh, more so than a, a place where cars would go through and go through a drive-through.
We've had a few of these. This one on ninety-nine sort of across from where the new Mornite is going and. Years ago, there was a, a sort of a drive-through coffee food cart that was in there. Again, differently treated it just like any other structure. You have queuing requirements, ADA requirements, you needed a bathroom, these kinds. It wasn't a huge problem. I was just pointing it out. They can still exist in other, other ways at locations, right?
Treat it more like a restaurant.
Yeah, that's just the way it gets treated if you want to drop something in there and operate for more than three days. That's what you'll have to do.
I think having a, allowing drive-through is a bad idea. I mean, these are going to be places where there are going to be people outside of their cars. Going from where they're sitting to where they're getting their stuff and. It, if somebody can hit the gas instead of the brakes and that's just the tragedy that's on everybody's newspaper. So. It is, if they want to go to a drive-through, there are plenty of places that have drive-through capabilities.
I agree.
Uh, transportation impacts uh proposing to treat this like any other development. So if they wouldn't cross a certain threshold of what we, uh, what we call peak hour trips. So kind of your, your morning and evening commute hours. Uh, the threshold right now is fifty trips generated during that hour. It would just be a simple kind of one or two-page memo from a traffic engineer saying, here's the. The code from the big book on traffic rate and. Uh, I believe food trucks are about three trips per peak hour or something like that. So even if you had. Ten carts, it would be thirty trips. Uh, so you'd be.
Isn't, aren't the trips, the customers coming to the food cart?
Okay, right. Uh, this would be probably something that would be, it might be busier during an evening, but.
When it's, I mean, this person who's developing a pot, would they have to do a traffic study?
They would get a, a much.
Like a business.
More limited, uh, just kind of a memorandum outlining. These are what we expect. It's not crossing your threshold for a full analysis of how every intersection's being impacted. Um, it's, it's much limit, more, uh, much more limited.
Yeah, there wouldn't. You often see TIA's, we call them a traffic impact analysis, which is, you know. Ninety-page documents looking at intersections and doing traffic model. That would involve none of this. This is basically. A memorandum that says, here's how many, what would matter is how many they're going to have on site. And then we have a, the magic IT ebook, the transportation engineer bible. Yeah, that tells you exactly how many trips come off, which everybody utilizes. And as, as Dan said, it's extremely unlikely they would ever trigger a full TIA for something.
If for some reason we got just a huge food cart pod to come in though. Uh, and they would trigger that, we would get a, a traffic study just because if it's that big. We would want to take a look at traffic, just like any other development. Oh, is that the doors locking at eight o'clock? Might have been the doors. Okay. Parking. Everyone's favorite subject. Basically the same as what we would require for uh most developments. Um, except I am proposing a couple areas of flexibility. Uh, so right now we require screening if there's a parking lot uh next to a, a street. Uh, we require it to be screened typically with like a three and a half foot tall shrub wall or uh. You could put a fence in or something like that, but um. I'm suggesting uh just some other options for a pod to utilize to create that screening. Whether it's uh like a landscape planter or actually putting carts in between the parking area and. In the street. Uh, like the food cart.
A food truck, you mean?
Yeah, yep.
As the green screen from the food truck?
Just your, your parking area and screening that from the street.
Oh, I see.
Or if you wanted to put outdoor seating, uh, that would be considered screening. That's just some suggestions. Uh, right now our code requires uh for a walkway going through a parking lot. Uh, typically you'll see them as just kind of uh paint striping on the, on the pavement. Uh, but our code now requires uh you to either do a raised walkway. Uh, or have it built in like concrete as opposed to the asphalt that we normally see. Um, so this would just be a more budget-friendly way to call out those walkways. Also, uh, recommending no uh carpool or electric vehicle parking requirements. And then in terms of actual ratios, uh. For bike parking, uh, a one, one bike parking stall per cart. So typical like little U-rack that you would see would be two spaces. Uh, right now we require uh half of all bike parking to be covered. And um. Our suggestion here would be to not include that covering requirement. My thought there be, oh, go ahead, sorry.
For G three, the carpool van pool EV parking, I think I would say depending on how large the food pod is. Maybe we could put something in that if it's going to have four or more pods, then you would need to have some sort of an EV. Parking available. It is the wave of the future and I don't know, people who work at them might need someplace to plug in their car, but. Um, I don't know, just a thought that maybe for a tiny one, no, but if it's of any size, like any other parking lot, it should be required to have them.
But people aren't there that long.
They are if they're working there.
Oh, working.
Yeah.
Well, and if you're going to have, you know, it's an evening, evening place that's got alcohol. I mean, you know, they could be there summertime. Yeah, that one in Lake Oswego.
Just remembering that I think we have a minimum number of spaces that triggers the, when the EV spaces, the space that they require.
We do.
Could remember it off the top of my head.
Yeah, something like that. I would say we should keep that for this.
Yeah, I was going to find very quickly in the code what that minimum number was before it triggered requirement for an EV space.
No, I don't need it.
And if, while Dan's looking that up, hope it's helpful. Um, I was just going to point out if it, if it wasn't clear, because we get, we get into the code on our end a lot. When we talk about screening, that was, that's not the landscaping. He's going to talk about landscaping in a second. We actually have a separate requirement to screen your actual parking area so that you don't have like five thousand headlights facing the street. Uh, that's what this would do. I mean, there would be hidden behind some kind of structure opaque. Whatever it might be, planters or something. There's a separate requirement. He's going to talk about surely about the landscaping for the site.
Um, so back to our EV requirement right now for non-residential development. If you are required to have twenty or more parking stalls. Based on your use, uh, you would have an electric vehicle parking requirement. Uh, at least.
Fifteen.
Uh, so this gets into a, a, a discussion here about the minimum ratio. What I've proposed here is one point five per cart. Uh, this comes from, I took a look at uh a number of cities throughout the metro area. Um, down to, you know, Wilsonville, Salem. It wasn't uniform in how these standards were applied. Some didn't have any. There was no minimum parking requirement. Uh, a couple. A couple had one point five. Uh, a couple based it on the total square footage of development and it was. It was kind of antiquated and seemed more like they were using what they would require for a normal restaurant. It was like one per thousand square feet. So if you've got a three hundred square foot food cart. That's, I mean, that's like, you'd have almost no required parking. Um.
But if you had ten food carts, that's fifteen parking stalls, right?
That would be what we have here, yes.
I mean, that wouldn't be enough. I, it doesn't sound like enough parking to me. It almost sounds like it would limit their business.
Because where are the owners going to park than the customers?
Guess we're just talking about minimums, all right?
This is the minimum.
They could go higher. Uh, we do have a max of double the minimum in our code. Uh, so they wouldn't be able to go more than three if this is the minimum.
Well, then I think with the minimum should be higher. I, I mean, a maximum of three, that doesn't sound. So if you had a pad uh or pod that's going to have three trucks, then their maximum would be nine cars.
It'd be six.
It's taken up by the employees.
And sometimes they have an extra employee, right? There's oftentimes two people in them that work in a cart. But I mean, maybe two, two spaces.
To be a minimum.
Make my living good.
At a, it's the maximum.
A food cart and I could only have like one customer at a time. That doesn't seem like I'm going to make it. That's made for success.
Uh, this is exactly the type of discussion though that uh I wanted to have. So um, where do you feel like that? Do you want me to do some more research?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Anyway, keeping the maximum in mind is important.
Maximum part because.
Yeah, when you get to a small number, if there are four carts, right? They may, they may want to have twenty total spaces.
Right.
So we tell them you're capped it.
Like a big Friday night where it's, yeah, they're not going to ever have one. Go, go.
I just think, these things are hard because they're site-specific. If you build it in downtown, they're going to use the street parking and it, just like the guy in Westland, he had no street. Minimum parking because they were going to park on the street in downtown. So that's why it's tough. Uh, because if we do do this, that eliminates downtown or some of these areas for building a place like this, because then there's just no.
So maybe that's.
Uh, we do already have a um exemption for downtown.
Okay, okay.
But that's only downtown. No other zone has that exemption. But that's only downtown. No other zone has that exemption.
Yeah, but if you build the pod and you start with four and the next year you've got six and the next year you've got eight, already you've run out of parking because you built it for.
They'd be able to come back in through an easy administrative review if they wanted to expand their parking lot.
That's where they're going to be needing the van pool.
So, so what do you do? Just don't strike the parking lot and tell.
Yeah.
Don't tell us about it and tell me.
Well, we can only have five, five parking spaces, but we've got all that land in there.
We have a couple of thoughts. First of all, we oftentimes tier our parking for this reason of, you know, a small number needs a bigger number of parking spaces in which, you know, once an industrial warehouse grows to 150,000 square feet, we have a different multiplier to determine it's one for every 10,000 square feet. We could maybe do that to kind of scale it. And the other is just put a blanket, you know, make it three per cart or something like that, or say, you know, there's a minimum five or something like that. We could even consider not having a maximum for the food carts. Leads to another issue of someone puts it in the middle of nowhere and does the rest, but, um, let's go back and look at them. But I think it definitely want to have more. Uh, if not just for encouraging some more parking to make sure they don't get stuck it. I really wanted to have more than nine parking spaces for my, you know, for my three trucks.
Okay. Uh, landscaping. This would be pretty similar to what we would require for, uh, most developments. We have a list of general requirements, uh, that any, any, uh, project would meet. What this does here is specify, uh, kind of a, a unique ratio based on this use. You know, understanding that it's going to be mostly pavement between the parking lot, the area where your trucks are parked, the seating areas. This is a lot of pavement. So let's, this suggestion I'm putting forward is let's put together a, a landscaping ratio based on the number of carts. I threw out 10, uh, as a starting point to discuss. And I also wanted to add, it's not really specifically discussed right now in our landscaping, uh, tables, but, uh, planters, like a decorative planter, uh, to be used as a way to meet that. And, um, the way I started thinking about that was, what's a common planter that you could buy at the store? And a lot of those half wood barrels, you could buy at most hardware stores. Um, those are about 25 gallons. So my thought was one of those could equal one plant unit. If you got a 50 gallon one, that could be two plant units. And each cart would have to provide, uh, 10 plant units.
And just. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
That sounds like a lot. Um, I have those barrels in my yard and I love them. They're beautiful and you could do tons of stuff with them. But if you put 10, like two rows of five next to each other, that's about the size of some of the carts. So I'm not, if you have three carts and you need 30 of those, that sounds like a lot. It'd be pretty. Not saying it wouldn't be lovely, but that sounds like a lot.
Am I to understand though, that this isn't necessarily that many by the cart, but that would include all the ones along the perimeter, all the ones out in front, all the ones that separate the, the parking lot from the structure, the ones that are in the middle of the seating area.
And you, uh, developers could still plant things in the ground. If they have a perimeter, like we have that five foot setback around the perimeter that we're going to be requiring. So that could be a landscaping area in the ground. Uh, this is just provide an additional option.
I was just, uh, I know it can be somewhat confusing, but our, our code define, we have this thing called a plant unit. Right? So when someone comes in, they has to do a landscape plan, we don't tell them exactly how many trees, shrubs, grass, et cetera. But we say you need X number of plant units. And then our code has a definition and I don't remember it. If it's a shrub of a certain height, that's some portion of a plant unit. If it's a big, beautiful tree, it's maybe.
It's like 10 plant units for.
Right. So there's a lot of different ways you can get there. What Dan's doing is he's adding this brand new category of gallon planters and giving, assigning them a planting unit. So they wouldn't have to plant any of these, these gallon planters. They could just plant again shrubs. They could tier it up a certain amount of trees and then they do a little table that says, here's how I accomplished my plant units. It's actually worked out well because it gives people a lot of variety for how they want to meet that, that overall landscape requirement with this plant unit number that we have.
And do you define nursery pot somewhere?
Oh, the ceramic problem.
I don't.
You mean plastic?
Yeah, you're the black.
Beautiful glazed ceramic pot at the nursery.
This, yeah, this would be.
We can get rid of plastic or whatever the other phrase is. We, that's what you mean. That's what you're talking about.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I would define what you mean.
That's a good idea.
It's good feedback. Yep.
One of our nurseries has this great thing called the drop-in. You buy the, the planter and every year you just go get the new insert and drop it in.
Who was that?
Maybe, uh, at our next meeting, I can come back with some example, some photo examples of what these 25 gallon or 50 gallon, what those, uh, actually.
Maybe like commercial nursery pot, something like that. Oh, you mean the 25 gallon?
Just to give a visual, just to see how, how big those.
Yeah, 50 gallon, sounds big.
But a lot of even the 25 gallon wood barrels have a nursery pot insert. So I think we need to look at that. Most of mine have a nursery pot insert. I pull that out, plant it, drop it back in the pot.
Would it be easy enough to just say, uh, you, you could use, uh, required landscaping, maybe permanently planted in the ground or put within a decorative planter and just keep it at that.
Okay, decorator says it. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's an easy fix. There we go. Okay. Uh, here's where we get into some screening. Right now our code has a kind of a, a table on screening and this is more for the perimeter of a property. So if you've got a gas station next to a single family house, our code would require you to put in a, a, a wall to screen that boundary, uh, to provide a, a buffer. And what I'm suggesting here, uh, focusing those screening requirements on when it does have a boundary with a residential property. Otherwise, if it's a commercial or industrially zoned property, uh, there would be no screening requirement. You could build a, a restaurant right now, uh, in a commercial zone next to another commercial zone and there would be no screening requirement. But thinking about, you know, if you were a homeowner or, um, you were in a multi-family right next to this, you may want some sort of buffer there. Keep people off your property and also hopefully to lessen the noise a little bit. That was the, the intent behind that. And then, uh, so the, those dumpster areas, the common refuse collection facilities is how I talk about them in the code. Right now our, uh, our requirements are to enclose those behind a concrete wall. Like a concrete block wall, six to seven feet tall. This would, uh, allow a fence to function instead of a wall. So just a cheaper alternative to perform the same function. You can still do a wall, just adding that option. Any questions, changes here? Okay. I think this is my last one. Um, signage. We would treat the pod like any other development. Uh, we've got uh, a certain allowance based on what type of sign they want. Uh, if it's a, like a big, uh, kind of like a popsicle sign or a pylon sign, you know, those big the, the signs on poles. Those are based on how much street frontage you have. If it's just a monument sign out front, uh, those are limited to a certain square footage. It's usually like 32 square feet or something like that. Uh, so that would be just like any other development. But since it would have a lot of, uh, trucks and carts, um, there might be little A-frames throughout. There's going to be signs on the trucks and on the carts and, um, so as long as they are not required to, or not being legible from the street, you know, that's not their intended purpose. We would, I'm suggesting that we not require them to get a permit and we just limit them, uh, to be, uh, say three feet above the roof of the car.
But is, I thought the cart pod is going to be a business and then it's going to have tenant.
It would.
Trucks that come in. So wouldn't the business have a sign?
You could, yep, the, the owner, kind of the property manager could still do a, like a monument sign out front saying Woodburn Food Cart Pod and the address.
But we're not going to require them to have a sign?
Usually our fire marshal and the, the building code is part of the permitting process. Uh, they do need to have some sort of address posted. That's easily legible from the street for emergency responders.
So the normal, the normal code would apply to the pod as a business, but the individual carts won't need a sign for, for it, but they can't be more than three feet above the cart. Okay.
Right.
And I was just going to point out that we have, that we have language right now in our sign code. We may massage this to align with that, which, which gets to this idea of, you know, we regulate all signs in the city, but of course, if it's a directional signage or a drive-in sign, right, that tells you how much your shake and burger is. We don't regulate those. And I think the language in the code says something like, if it's not intended to be viewed from the public right of way, then you don't need a sign permit for it, which would be similar to this, right? The idea is once you're on a site, you can see everything. You can read the boards. And there's a lot more, but, uh, if it's not intended to be seen from outside, it's a little shaky, but it's worked out pretty well for us. It can sometimes be tricky.
That has been so nice because we can just say the vast majority of those stores don't have their, uh, the face of their, their unit facing a street. So we'd be going through so many sign permits if we had to review.
Right. Just the, just the ones on the, the face, the front, the fringes, we need sign permits and internal ones don't and shouldn't. Once you're on the site, we don't care.
And then the exterior lighting. So if you've got like light poles throughout your site, uh, those would be the same as any other development. So there's height limits. Uh, they've got to be those kind of shielded light fixtures. So they're not shining bright into neighboring properties, things like that.
Is there anything in here, um, about the sidewalks being a place where you can order? I know in downtown Portland, they had them facing the sidewalk and people, I mean, that's a little bit larger, but are we?
No.
In downtown, they kind of set up shop sometimes and you can just kind of, as long as there's enough room, it's.
Yeah, and it's, it's interesting. I'd, so my guess would be that this wouldn't allow that because we have like separation requirements of screening landscaping. Be pretty atypical to have something right on the side. I'm not saying we wouldn't want it or that it couldn't really work. That is pretty typical, right? We see that a lot. Or it's just you walk by and it's right here next, or there's a row of six of them. Instead of turning their back on the street, they kind of turn their, their doors and their entry out towards the street. I'm going to challenge Dan with that one. I, I don't know what the commission thought about it.
That's downtown more than else because even in the pods in Portland, they're all enclosed.
So that. So because we have the seating area in the center and things that we had talked about being a requirement, it doesn't really lend itself to be.
I worry, I'm just saying, again, this is all going to come down to the land that, you know, the site, right? If there's a, I personally am not, I wouldn't be because I'd like the congregating kind of aspect of it, you know, uh, myself, but I'm just thinking if someone finds a skinny little piece of land and they can make everything fit, is that going to be something that we're going to allow? Cause it's just tough to, it's just, yeah, every site's just going to be different.
We could probably, I'm thinking maybe somewhere in here, put something in, in there about like the orientation of food, food carts would be such that they wouldn't create.
Ordering.
Inside. Excessive, like a, like a line into the public right of way or something. We, we have the same language for, uh, loading zones. You can't have a loading zone that means you're moving a truck and just blocking the road or something. And our, our parking lots are, are required to to be such that you're maneuvering on private property to get out in and out rather than. So we could fi- figure something out. It's a good point. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, with all the setbacks and landscape requirements, it might be hard to, it's true, to do that.
They could easily put a little concrete pad in front.
Two steps.
Yeah.
I think, I think we could come up with some exception language for that case. And again, if it's not fronting and doesn't go that way, then I'd be turned back and be screened and have all the other requirements. Sort of like what we call build two lines. We sometimes have for front doors and, and walls, particularly downtown. You're either on the street or you aren't. You have a zero setback or a 10 foot, something like that. We could do something like that here too. Thanks, Dan.
The last thing I think I had in here was just, uh, uh, the same slide, uh, just to go back and see what the timeline was. I think in general, things are on the right path. A few things to look up further. Couple tweaks to make, but in general, it seems like we're on the right path. That's what I'm hearing.
I think it's a good first draft. I don't see a lot of big glaring things that we were.
Great. And Dan, Dan's going to again, reach out to, uh, people who have submitted similar food cart applications before, group of people we know that run food cart pods on the other end. And make it available, have it online for people to see. He'll send them links and maybe kind of prod them with a few specific questions about a, number of parking spaces and what the impacts of the, maybe the propane and natural gas or maybe somebody who does barbecue will tell me something. I don't know about how these cook or they grill or something along those lines. Just curious about it. Sound good? Then bring it back. And hopefully we get some more input at that meeting and then following that we'll have our public hearing. Official one where you would make your recommendation. Again, just a reminder, city council makes a decision on zoning code modification. You all make a recommendation for.
Thank you.
Business for the commission? From the commission? Any staff updates?
Just very quick, uh, we have, um, I think I mentioned this before, a couple quasi judicial items that are in the, in the hopper. In other words, we have applications that have come in. I give my usual ex parte notice to you all if you could ask questions about. I give my usual ex parte notice to you all if you get asked questions about them. You're discouraged from discussing it in any way, say, nope, you're a part of this body. If you have questions, comments, send them to staff and show up at the meeting and testify so that you all can hear it as a group. Those items are with a couple of gas station applications that are in. One you saw about a year ago, year and a half ago, it's off Oregon Way. Uh, it's right where the old two bank buildings were where the bombing occurred. And the other one is on the east side on the, just north of the Safeway off 211. Um, very small parcel in there, right smack in the middle of the new apartment buildings that are being built. That one's gonna come in about six weeks. You're gonna see it. All right, it will have our public hearing for it. Just NFYI on those. Uh, we are not, because this is gonna be 30 days out for this, we're not gonna have a meeting in two weeks. Mark it. I'll send out a notice for everyone again. Oh, that. Oh, I'm sorry. I have my, I have my old note. Sorry. Give me the third work sessions in two weeks. Then we're gonna wait 30 days to come back for our public hearing. Sorry. Thank you, Dan. So you will be here in two weeks. That is the 25th. And just a random note, uh, we have new WDOs, new zoning codes uh, that are available. Um, if you would like a hard copy one, obviously they're available and like we can show you how to access them and get into them online. But if you want a hard copy, it's not a problem. Just email us or you can just let me know right now if you really want one and we'll print one to make sure we have them up for you. They'll be bound. I know I have one request. Oh, we have an extra here already? That's yours up there. It's not a problem. That was all I had.
Sure. I have a motion in a second. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.